Hi, my name is Joyce Foreman. And I'm running for Dallas ISD District 6 trustee seat. I'm running for reelection. And I'm doing that because I still have work to do for the community and the school. Voting for the election is early voting starting April the 24th through May the 2nd. Election Day is May the 6th. Again, I am asking you for your vote to return me to the Dallas ISD School Board District 6 trustee seat.
We're happy to do it.
How you doing?
No, I haven't yet. I started watching everything that got in. I'm so glad.
This Foreman hanging here with the school board at the ISD. I know it wasn't easy, but she's still hanging. And we need to keep her hanging so we know our kids will be educated. And we go way back. I call her one of our longtime warriors, the fight for the children of the ISD. And I'm so happy to be here tonight to celebrate with her. And she, and everybody out there, you need to keep Joyce Foreman because she is the person that's gonna fight for your children.
I'm here to support Joyce Foreman in her reelection to District 6 for the trustee. I think she did an excellent job for District 6, and so we want to make sure we keep her. Thank you.
So I would, I'd like to congratulate trustee Foreman on an amazing job working with the community, um, working at Campbell High School. She, she's ready to support anytime for all our students. Um, and I'm excited to, to make sure that she, she gets to the finish line by May 6th. I'm proud to endorse her as well. So, um, I'm proud to have trustee Foreman. She's always at all our events, so. I'm looking forward to the next couple of years.
Been my friend a seventeen year. She had me when I came from Cal to sit lunch counter over at H. Green. And, uh, I've been sitting with her since, alright, and standing. Alright, that was in the sixties, maybe sixties, seventies, yeah.
Hi, my name is Tracy Shelby, and I'm here to support Joyce Foreman. I hope everyone come out and vote. She will be great for our school boards. Thank you.
Well, Joyce Foreman has been the same yesterday, today, and she'll be the same tomorrow. She's a fighter. She's for the community, uh, and the ISD is, is better because Joyce Foreman is there. And so, um, she's a fighter. I'm a fighter. I want, I want to be in the Fox Hall with her, and I want her in the Fox Hall with me.
Joyce Foreman has always been a great advocate for public education. And because of that, we've been, our hardened supporters of Joyce Foreman for years now. And we would like to see her continue her, uh, serving on the, on the board. She's a, she's a winner.
We're here to support Joyce Foreman. Uh, we need someone on our side that's employee friendly and listens to the concerns that we have, and we're here to fight for her.
Hi, I'm here to support Joyce Foreman because she's always in the trenches fighting for the rights for our members.
Hello, I'm here supporting Joyce Foreman because she is definitely an advocate for students first, and then for the employees in our district. And we're able to work with her, bring ideas, bring concerns. She listens with a, a true heart and is, uh, solution oriented. And that's the type of person that we need to keep on our board of trustees that will help us move forward for the best education for our kids and the best working conditions for our employees in Dallas ISD.
The occasions, the, the, that's the food that we sit down and eat and enjoy ourselves.
Let's pray. Oh Father and Mother of God, we thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your grace, your mercy. We thank you for Foreman, we pray your guidance and your strength. And we hear it upon our body, we pray that we're blessed this occasion tonight. And then we thank you for the food, and we pray your blessings upon it may give us the strength we need to continue to serve you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Hello, my name is Bernadette Nuttall, former trustee of the Dallas Independent School Board. I urge you to get out and vote for trustee Foreman. If you're looking for someone to make the best decision for your children, I suggest you vote for trustee Foreman. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening. I just wanted to say, um, wishing, um, Dr. Foreman great success. She's done a tremendous job up until this point. We're looking forward to even more success coming. Uh, as, as already been indicated, District 6 had no D's, no F's this past, uh, this previous semester. So we're looking forward to that ongoing. And hopefully, the other districts will learn from what she's been able to do and duplicate that so that the entire district may also rise and shine to where District 6 is. So much success to Dr. Foreman.
Thanks, King, for coming out this, this, this afternoon on this great occasion and investing in the support of trustee Joyce Foreman in a reelection campaign. The ISD School Board, uh, I've been asking Dr. Foreman, others have to reelect her, others have to reelect her. So we want to start off with Ms. Nuttall, Dr. Lou Blackburn, then Brother Jeff Mason, and then we have, uh, Tracy Shelby. And then, I would guess, then all the way from, from Campbell High School, all the way from Campbell High School, all the way to Madison. Okay, and then the group of guests, then we ask you if you can keep agreeing to others have to reelect and commission a prize for closing that. Okay, can you go first?
Thank you, um, Joyce Foreman, we're doing it for you. We have Foreman voted back as well, and we have done a good, a good challenge city, so they gotta continue to be in our opinion, have to come out. But for this lady here, MBE will be off the table at the ISD. That may not mean anything to most of you, uh, but when you talk about what goes on with the majority of businesses in this country, unfortunately, they're capital on the MBE. What I appreciate about what, what Ms. Foreman is saying about the way that there's a deal right now in the legislature. Not only to do away with the DEI, but what they're doing to the bill, they're extracting, saying basically, do away with MBE program, but keep women and veterans in the loop. That's code switching, and we need to tell them that means. Keep women and veterans in a program. If I say Hispanic, you're out. That's a deal right now. But that's a deal. And by, by Joyce Foreman, it was all the way at the ISD years ago. So Joyce, thank you for your warrior spirit. Thank you for understanding the fight. Thank you for, as Maya Angelou says, uh, having the courage. She says, you're the greatest of all the virtues in the world. So if you have the virtue of courage, there's nothing else left. So Joyce, thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Bernadette Nuttall. I am former, uh, D I S D trustee that served as trustee Joyce Foreman and Dr. Lou Blackburn. Um, and from working with Joyce, one thing that I love, is love about working with Joyce and love about working with Dr. Blackburn. We don't always agree on every issue, but we came together for the issues that matter for our children. And if you want someone who's gonna read, study, fight, pray, fight and pray, you want Joyce Foreman. So I really, really appreciate, we all still, the three of us still get together and go to Popadove, their favorite restaurant, not mine. And spread a word about the things that are going on in the district and any way that we can help Joyce now. Because as you know, uh, Lulu was the, was the one that calmed us down. And we'll tell Lulu, go play your role. We're, we're gonna stir it up. Joyce is playing her part, we play. And so that, what I miss is that we all understood what the mission was. So I don't know if she had anybody that's helping on that end. She's always having to bring them along, like pull them, like a horse, come on. So, vote for Joyce.
I don't know who she means by Lulu. But listen, uh, it's always fun to come and hang out with Joyce Foreman. Uh, like Bernadette was saying, sometimes we would be for lunch, just to go over old time strategies and also learn more about what's going on today. Uh, but, but I'll tell you, uh, it's always been a pleasure to work with Joyce Foreman. And it's always a pleasure to still support Joyce Foreman. And speaking of that, support Joyce Foreman, uh, they tell me your cash account is three four- three four- I want y'all to write that down. Three four- I want y'all to pull your palms out right now. Three four- if some of y'all not moving, pull out your cash out and go ahead and put in, I'm gonna say, a hundred dollars. I'll be a hundred percent behind Joyce Foreman. Pull out your cash out right now. Cash dollar, three four- go ahead and do a hundred dollars right now. Bernadette, they pulling out the, 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 the.
They already put it in the thing, but.
It's just like, I'm the preacher, so I gotta go first. So I've already done mine, okay? Who's next? Hundred dollars, who's next with a hundred dollars? Come on, that number, that B. Okay, y'all already got that one hundred dollars. Who's got a check? Anybody else got a check? Hundred dollar deal. Okay, I'm just being the preacher, I'm bringing the deep to everybody else. Cause I know what takes one to run a campaign. Alright, alright. Pull out the fifty dollar bill. Okay, we're gonna, we're like a fast food, we're gonna go over there. Pull out the fifty, oh, see now, I like men that got money in their pocket. Okay, anybody else wanna add to this pile? Okay, I'm not going after them from the back. That's good on your way out, okay? Give support to Joyce Foreman because she got my support all the way now. Give her some financial support. Alright, thanks Joyce.
Okay, and right after, right after the A R T speech, right after the A R T speech, then this nephew joined in. Nephew, I said Tom Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. It is a real joy to be here. Um, I've been doing this a long time. I'm Raina Honee, I'm president of the Alliance of Teenagers and a former teacher in the district. Um, but I know how Foreman has it to have board members that listen to the needs and to the desires and to the, uh, the concerns of the students, number one, of their parents because many of them have more than one or two children in the district, but also for the employees of Dallas ISD. And Joyce has been one, ever since she's been on the board, that has a heart for what she's doing. She has a servant's heart, but she's in it for the right reasons as well. The students and the employees are the focus for what needs to happen in our district. She and I don't always agree on everything either, but we are professionals. We work together, we talking out, we try to come to what is gonna be the best in the long run for everyone. Y'all know how the mighty dollars speaks. And especially with this legislature in session right now, we've got to be more vocal than we've ever been before because the attack on our schools, our public schools, is bigger than it's ever been. So please make your voice heard there, as well as making your voice heard at the ballot box for the ISD trustee 6, Joyce Foreman. Thank you for what you do, Joyce. We appreciate you.
Let me say good evening to everyone. I tell you, George, I was just thinking about that just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, my name used to be Nephtha Jackson, or John. That's the only thing I wanted in the divorce, is to go back to my name, Jack. So it is Nephtha Jackson. I thought about what Dr. King said. Life begin to end the day you become solemn about the things that matter. Well, what matters to me, should matter to each one of you, is the education of D I S D students. And so Joyce is doing a good job on the district, representing District 4, cause I live in District 4, and I've been involved. Oh, oh, I think if I said it right. But anyway, in District 6, and of course I support Joyce and I'm working with that campaign. And, uh, she gonna be okay. So I'm not worried about you. She gonna be okay because, yes, because the people have sent a clear message. We're not gonna change the game. We're just gonna keep on being friends. Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Mason, Good News, uh, Sunday School Class, part of the St. Luke Community, nine Methodist Church. So I'm not, I stand here by myself, but I don't stand alone. Uh, we do have members of the Good News Class here. And so we stand in support of one of our own, Dr. Joyce Foreman, uh, for several reasons. But I'll be brief, everyone has already stated a lot of what I would have said. But just to make it, uh, more personal, I'll just say this, that I do know people that talk, and then I do know people that work. Very few people talk and work. So Joyce speaks up for the youth and their families, and then she works hard for not only the kids in her district, but also for the entire D I S D district. And what she's doing in Dallas does impact what goes on in the state of Texas. So it does matter what you do. And, and I know that with politics, you, you gotta act locally, but think globally. Because just like what's going on in Houston, that can also impact Dallas. But you have fighters like Joyce, I think, uh, Christian Price called her a warrior. You have warriors like Joyce Foreman, Dr. Foreman, who's out there on the front line, fighting on behalf of the children, that puts up a barrier around Dallas that, uh, will be hard to penetrate. And one of the ways that we ensure that we continue to have a warrior like Dr. Foreman is to continue to support her financially, support her with your prayers, and also continue to support her with your presence. It does matter that we show up to school board meetings. Your presence, even if you don't say that, just your presence makes a difference. And so, just like your presence here makes a difference, your presence there also makes a difference. So we just want to continue to support and, and on behalf of the Good News Class, which we do have representatives, y'all raise your hand. As representatives of the other Good News Class. And so, we, we just want to say, continue to fight, continue to struggle. The struggle continues. And where there is no struggle, there is no progress. Frederick Douglass said that a hundred years ago, it is, it was true then, it is still true today. So we just wanted to encourage you to keep on going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, thank you. Just before I, I perform, and I'm trying to see how, I'm trying to be as clear with Dr. Blackman and say that our, that our next speaker, just remember the name. That's all I'm gonna say now. Just remember the name. To refer to the name later on this year, just remember the name. That's the current Tracy Shelby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Shelby, and I'm here to support Dr. Joyce Foreman. Why do we need her back on the school board? Education for her is number one. Education in our community should be number one. Our children in our community is priority for her, is number one. And what's important for her is our white males. And our white males are getting lost in the school system. We need someone there who's vested in our community. As they taking away all of our rights between Abbott and, um, down in D.C., they're gonna start taking away our educational rights. We need someone there to fight for us, to fight for our kids, and to fight for education. Only thing we gotta convince our children, as Dr. Foreman has done, education is important, education is priority, college is important. And she's helping our children to get there. And, and the work she's doing impacts us directly in our neighborhood. So I hope as everyone go out, make time to vote, bring at least four to five people with you. Have delivery, four to five people with you, so she can go back to the school board to continue to do the work she does. Uh, once again, I support Dr. Joyce Foreman.
Thank you, thank you. And just, just a brief word, um, we all remember the thirty years, um, often times, Dr. Foreman treated us, she treated ugly on the school board, and she took. But, uh, Dr. Foreman did not wake up when I wanted, and so he run for the school board. Long before she made the run to the school board, she was involved in the community after protesting, run people out, letting people know in a respectful way. Then they were wrong, which she disagreed with, with them. Uh, and she been out on the front line, and she's there now. And that's why we're here tonight, to show her our love and our support for her. Uh, she's someone that we can count on. Uh, she's not for sale. Uh, she's her own boss, has her own thoughts, her own way, and how, and how she would get to our children. Y'all may not know, but school board members know their pain. They say, they know their pain. I mean, this, this is a mission, this is a mission in terms of caring for the system because they are preparing our young people for our future. And so therefore, uh, we want to thank our family, we appreciate her, and we support her. And without other views, and without another word, I'm gonna, uh, I'm handing my, uh, my hands to Joyce. Just before she takes her mic, what I need to tell her now, she graduated from school that we knew, and I, and I made her an honor very chosen, so.
Chosen, chosen for life, for all sides of South Dallas.
But I have a story to tell you. I am a tiger, believe in tigers, and once a tiger, always a tiger. That's just the way they go. But you know, just reflecting on my tenure as a trustee of the district, I've had to grow a lot. Cause since Lou Blackburn, when I got on the board, they were not, wait. But we figured out a way to work for children. And I think that's the most important thing. We set ourselves aside, aside, to figure out how do we do this for children. It's not easy work. A lot of things, it's not easy work. It's studying, it's working with small black schools to understand the individual needs, working with the administration to try to make sure that policies are put in place that will make a difference. And then getting in there and fighting for issues that you know the need to be. Sometimes it hasn't been easy to fight for some of those issues. But I strongly stand by my principles. I have two young ladies over here that work for Dark. They know, when I was the vice chair of the Dark Board, I did the same thing. You have one of my Sunday School members, Abby Lake, who knows that I went to that board, the childcare, uh, facilities in our area. Literally went to that, to make sure that they were part of the partnership in Dallas ISD. So it's on many different levels, and it takes a lot to be able to do this. But I truly believe that I am doing work to be able to do these kinds of things for our children. Because through education, I had thirty years of business experience. That's my personal education out of Dallas ISD. So I know what can happen for our young people. We look at several examples of lives that we must live. But one of the things I will share with you is one of the last things I've done is that I worked with University of Soft Textes at Dallas to ensure that every senior in Carter, Campbell, and Kaplan-Gillam will receive an acceptance letter to college. So there will be no excuses for our young people in Carter, Campbell, and Kaplan-Gillam, which are mine through high schools. There will be no excuses for them not to join the college because most of them, because most of them will qualify for the county. And they should have. One of the things I think we have to do, like the Blackburn company, is never let them know this thing outside of the box. We gotta be ready to go when we sing up and try to make these kinds of things happen. Uh, one of, I, I believe we have to meet children when they are first. We can't try to design a place for them. They're gonna be at different levels and different spots. And we gotta be ready to meet them where they are. And then to support them in whatever effort that is. I am a firm believer that through public education, we can make a huge difference in our children. And that is why I'm willing to go back with three years with okay. To make sure that my work is not complete, but it carries on to to a completion. I love Dallas ISD. I love public education. I love the children. And I want to make sure that I'm the one that's there to continue to represent District 6 where we are the only district in Dallas ISD out of nine. On the state of California, we have no D's and no F's. And what I will tell you is, six of those schools are predominantly out of state. And they say they're here to, I say again, if you give a proper name. And if you don't think state accountability matters, go ask Houston. It matters. It's the only thing we measure. And we gotta make sure that not only District 6 is able to say that, but the other eight districts are able to say it also. Because it's not just about me and my district, it's about Dallas ISD and the world state. Thank you very much for coming.
Just before we close out, uh, we have food that's delivered, that's, that's paid for, you want to pay for the California. So we want you to do that for it. We would be interested if we did not point out, just, they have a loving, who works.
You want to say something?
Lawrence, you have heart, you're a daughter. Lord, you have heart, the Lord.
We're just in the hall for Miss Foreman to get a real life.
Okay. Lord, working out of their heart, just out of their heart. So let me thank you for your presence. Oh, but that we.
Yeah, it was, yes, 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 yes.
This is not just a, just a justice, could you play as justice? This is also a school board trustee, who's here playing. So we're gonna ask trustee to be a white foot, right on the spot. There's nobody she is supporting, trustee Foreman.
Why do you, why do you support us, like?
Good evening, excuse my tardiness, there was a wonderful event that was happening at Union Station with free drinks that I left to come to be with trustee Foreman. But I just wanna say that, yeah, I just wanna say that it's been an experience, personally, with trustee Foreman. I saw a person that she likes to be alone, in a parking lot on the way here, one of them. She can't, she don't even know who to talk about, there's so many. She's cyber bullish, she's, she's in person, my God. See, there's too many to listen to on this day and age. So, he told me, sent you a message, that we need you at least. So I just wanted to share that with you. But the trustee Foreman has been around, she's told me, nine years, that's a long time. And I don't know how long she's been on B there, twenty, thirteen?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen. But she really does have a heart for the children, and she does work hard for them. We're also, just tired of her seeing that shirt that she loves to wear, coming in our face. You may wonder, "Which shirt?" But the one that she loves to wear, that she has all A's, all first syllables, A's, Bs, and Cs.
No D's, no S's.
And, and, yes. So, at that end, you know, the fact that she has a ring, because one of her schools have definitely gone to state. But I just, I thank you guys for coming, and if anybody else you can think of that will help support her campaign and help her, so we can keep her in the seat, please do so. I'm definitely gonna be doing my part as well.
George gonna be okay, don't worry.
Yes.
We got Asha Jackson.
So, you know, we just wanna, you know, it, just like she'll tell you, take no opponent, do not disbar the opponent. Work this as hard as if you don't have anything, because you, you sleep on somebody, they may end up, yeah. We've seen that here in Dallas campus. But, uh, DISD, I'm quite sure, would be excited about her, uh, as far as the work that she's done in her, in her district, and for the different of the halls. So, I think that's it, I'm not, I'm not sure how long I was supposed to be speaking, but I can talk, I was, and she's giving me to approve.
Uh, we have a representative of the school board from Grand Prairie. So, this Brian Potter, he's come home to live in Grand Prairie, to learn what Dr. Foreman did, and now he has been a season B.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Brian Potter. I'm a proud school board trustee for Grand Prairie, the Baptist School District, but I'm also an assistant principal for Kim Weisner. So I, I just want to speak on behalf of this woman. She's one of the most involved trustees that I've seen. I know she's always a phone call away, she is fully supporting us at campus. I see, and all of, she actually supports all the campuses. So I'm proud that she's our trustee, I'm proud, she's, she's all about the kids. She supports, she works with our administration, she's a, she's a people's birth. And I know that education is in her heart, her gaze is in her heart, and I'm proud to continue to support her. And I know that she'll continue to support us in any way that we can. Trustee Foreman, can't, I can't wait to continue walking.
And we have open mic, if anyone, we don't wanna leave anyone out, if they feel, tell, you say something. But one of the things that, that I will take, take my, one of the things that people have not given Dr. Foreman credit for, there, there, everything, there were only a few African-American male trustees within District Six, or within DISD. And that, uh, Dr. Foreman took the issue on that board going in by trust, trustee White, and out of her, this three more schools, I think, eight of them.
So, I have twenty-four schools that are waiting. And out of the twenty-four schools, there are nine males, there are seven African-Americans, and two Hispanic males, which is a focus that I've had, um, since I've been on the board. It just kind of be more inclusive, there's more males in front of our children.
And that is worth.